Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hudson for Monday, April 7th, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Mayor Birchall.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yaku.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, T. Winkle.
Here.
District Five, Hackett is excused. District Six, Vanslow.
Here.
At this time, we're going to swear in two new police officers. Judge Garrity, Chief Jensen.
Kate, please step forward. I don't know if we want to use this. You get to hand it to me. You want me to just do that? You want to do that, sir?
I don't.
You don't want to? (laughter). Right in between.
You hold this.[78.81][78.81](laughter). They're going to need to hear you.
Oh, she needs to... She needs to raise her hand.
The call.
We're going to move it on.
Are you ready? I, Catherine M. Potter, have, having been appointed as a parole officer...
Having been appointed as patrol officer...
...for the City of Hudson Police Department...
For the City of Hudson Police Department.
...swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
...discharge the duties of said office...
...part of the duties of said office.
...to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability, so help me.[129.13][131.28](applause).
Kate comes from us from... She worked in Phillips and Nielsville, and she originally from down in the Beldenville area, so we're happy to have her here. She's got five-plus years of experience, so we're looking forward to getting her on the street real soon. Zack Scholz, front and center.
Hi, Zack Ripley Scholz.
Hi, Zack Ripley Scholz.
Having been appointed as a patrol officer...
Having been appointed as a patrol officer.
...for the City of Hudson Police Department...
For the City of Hudson Police Department.
...swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
...and will faithfully and impartially...
And will faithfully and impartially.
...discharge the duties of said office...
Discharge the duties of said office.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me.
That'll be done.[204.14][205.28](applause).
Zack is one of our part-time officers. We hired him back in... A year ago in April. So, we just got him on the street, and he is a graduate of Hudson High School, year 2003, I believe. So, I believe we have eight graduates from Hudson High School on our department, so doing very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Marty. Congratulations, officers. Now, we have the presentation of service awards to our common council members. So, I think they're over here. Kurt, you're up first. So, I'll read this, I guess. So, this is the City of Hudson Appreciation Award to Kurt T. Winkle. In grateful recognition of your outstanding efforts as District Four Alderperson, the City of Hudson, for your significant contributions as member of the Public Works Committee and Park Board during your term in office from April 17th, 2012, to April 15th, 2014. Congratulations.[277.74][277.74](applause). Now, Lori, come on up, Lori. Guess we'll go on this side, huh? Because you've been on this side of the table.
(laughter).
Well, this one's a little longer, because she's been here a little longer.
I'm older.
You're older. This is a City of Hudson Appreciation Award to Lori Bernard. In grateful recognition for your outstanding efforts as District Three Alderperson, the City of Hudson Common Council, and your significant contributions as member of numerous boards and commissions during your term as office from April 15th, 2008, to April 14th, 2014. Thank you, Lori.[322.02][322.02](applause). This time in our agenda, we take suggestions from citizens present concerning anything that is not on the agenda. So, if there's anyone here that would like to address the council, now's your time. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? If not, let's move on to our consent agenda items. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular common council meeting minutes of March 24th, 2014, and the special common council meeting minutes of March 31st, 2014; to approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period April 8th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015; and to approve the issuance of six regular operators licenses for the period July 1st, 2014, to June 30th, 2016; and to approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used July 3rd through 5th, 2014, at the Hudson Booster Days event contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. Additional operator license information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve a budgetary transfer of $1,300 from the contingency short-term capital account group to the clerk treasure account group to cover the cost of a replacement computer and required peripherals for the receptionist. To approve a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for the Hudson Boosters Incorporated for July 3rd through 5th, 2014, for the Hudson Booster Days event. To approve the lease agreement between the City of Hudson and the Hudson Boosters for the storage building located at 6 St. Croix Street for a three-year period from May 1st, 2014, to April 30th, 2017, as presented. To approve the continuance of the conditional use permit for a fuel station at 1611 Maxwell Drive with a limit of four fuel pumps and conformance with state and federal requirements. To place on file the EMS Commission meeting minutes of March 25th, 2014, and that is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
We'll call.
Yaku?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
T. Winkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes. Next item is from Finance, discussion possible action on bids received for the 2014 street maintenance and seal coating. We've tabled that, or not tabled it.
Postponed.
Postponed it, excuse me, till the next meeting. We have a issue on Helen Street... No, not Helen Street.
Laurel.
Laurel to...
Laurel from 17th to about Hoyt.
Yep, that's it. 17th to Hoyt. And so, we'll get that fixed, and then we'll move on with the bid. It was a project that happened three years ago, and we'd like to get that fixed and finish before we award the new contract. Any questions on that? Kate? Unfinished business, discussion and possible action on hiring a part-time engineer. I think you have the issue seats ahead of you. Mr. Vanslow and I met with a gentleman by the name of Tom Sifko, who is here tonight, and we would like to offer him the part-time position, engineer for the City of Hudson. We would... We will get the terms and the detail all laid out, somewhere between $60 and $70 an hour, what we've talked about in the... We don't have the exact dollars. We want to go through, Catherine, we'll get some wordings put together in the contract. So, we're just getting approval before we moved on any further to the contract. Does anybody have any questions about this? We've talked with both Denny and Tom about it. The position will report directly to Denny.
The only question I had, and I like this proposal, is where are we... Are we going to end up going out to bid for fuller service?
Yes.
Because we don't have the capability of doing updates on maps or specs.
Or signing... We're not going to have Tom do any drawing or signing of plans. He's not going to design and sign plans.
And he won't be carrying the insurance for that either.
Yeah.
So, he can't sign for designs.
Okay.
The intent is to have that back to you with staff comments next meeting?
Next meeting.
But we kind of want... The mayor suggested we do this first, just to know where we're at.
Because this is going to impact what that engineer firm will do and not do.
So, that'll be... The draft will be... You'll have that next meeting to start looking over.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Discussion possible zoning ordinance amendments, City of Hudson zoning code, Chapter 255, in regard to breweries, brew pubs, wineries, manufacturers, distilleries in the B3 Central Business District, B2 General Business District, Light Industrial District, and the I2 General Information Industrial District. Ordinance 3-14. Mr. Darnold.
The first reading on this ordinance was approved on Monday, March 24th. There's one relatively minor change on page three, the brew pub previously had not shown a production area limit. It should be listed as 3,000 square feet, similar to the distilleries and wineries. The purpose of that being is we want these production areas limited, so they can't fit within the downtown area. Catherine also had modified hours of retail, not so much as substantial, as significant change, but just rewording. Make it a clarification, maybe Kathy would like to comment on that.
Yeah, that's paragraph seven on page five, the hours of operation. I just split it out to hopefully make it a little more readable and understandable with respect to the different facilities. The intent is to treat facilities that don't require a municipal license, but that are allowed to serve either on or off sale either beer or intoxicating liquor, such as the breweries and distilleries, to have them be governed by the same hours established under Wisconsin statutes as Class A and Class B beer and intoxicating liquor. So, they're all... Even though they don't have a municipal license, they're subject to those same hours, which they wouldn't be under state law. The city can adopt more restricted hours, since there aren't any hour restrictions on those facilities.
Do you feel that's okay, and we'll hang... We'll stand up?
I did run it by Tyler Quam. I mean, I had extensive email communication with him at the Department of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. I did ask about requiring operators licenses, and the statutes won't allow that. So, we did...
So, it's a good addition.
Oh, yes. And I think, actually, they wished it was in the statute, but yes, they concur that the city can, since the statute is silent on it with respect to the other facilities.
Okay. But we cannot require operators' licenses?
No, that's prohibited by statute.
Okay. Anybody?
I move to suspend the rules.
We already had first reading.
No, we have the first reading, yep. The last. Oh, we did for the first reading?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
There may be individuals in the audience that may want to have comments before.
Sure. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the issue? Okay. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Denny and Catherine, good job. That was a... That was a project that took a little bit, but good job on it. I think we did a good job. A discussion, possible motion to reconsider prior action on passport parking system. Is there an update on that?
Do you want me to just explain first the motion to reconsider?
Yeah.
At the last meeting, what was on the agenda was approval of the agreement, because the council had already approved that 300... No, the per transaction, but no more than 300. But in the discussion, it seemed that the council, and the council did want to look at it again. It hadn't been noticed for a motion to reconsider. Marty wasn't here, and Randy wasn't here. So, I think the proper way to bring it back, although the council did want to look into it further, is to have the motion to reconsider. Assuming it's approved, then it's properly back in front of the council, and you can do whatever you'd like with it. That's the way.
So, that's what C.
That's what C is. So, someone who voted in favor, i.e. not... Not rich.[898.54][898.54](laughter). Needs to make the motion to reconsider.
Okay, is there somebody here that wants to make that motion?
I'll move to reconsider.[906.14][906.14](laughter).
Okay. Is there a second? Do we need a second? Yeah, then we'll vote on it.
You need a second, then vote on it, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, now, you can, yep.
I'm going to reconsider.
We put this on... We did not receive an agreement, a new agreement, so we didn't put that on there, but I just... The mayor thought we should have maybe have an update on what was going on.
Well, I spoke with Brandon after the last meeting. He was supposed to get an agreement too by Monday this week, and then I thought I saw something passed by an email, but possibly not. However, the big question that I felt was on... That was a concern was the 15 cents processing fee that would be charged to the city. His response was that we can indeed, if we want, turn that over to the residents by just having them implement it, saying instead of a quarter, they're paying 40 cents. So, if that's something that the council feels that's what they would like happening, yes, it can be done. So...
And the service to the city would be the same as far as their reporting?
Yes, everything's the same. It's 350. We just wouldn't be charged a 15 cents. It would just be if you would like to use this, you're going to pay 40 cents per your transaction.
For me, that makes a lot more sense.
What we received from Brandon were just some charts that showed how it might work.
Yeah.
So, if we can get that updated, we'll bring it back.
Yeah, he had no problem. And I think, I don't know, Bob was going to be on standby by phone. I don't know if that's...
Right, but I talked to the mayor, and he felt that we should probably have someone in person.
Yeah, he's out of town, or he would be here, so...
So, we'll put it on the next agenda then?
But, so, my question is, though, do we need to put it on... Was there... I know there was concerns about contracts. What are we missing from the contract now?
Well, I think you also mentioned last time that there isn't anything in there on the documentation that the city's going to get, showing how the collections are done and the deductions are made, and just that whole process. So, I did want to get something from him on that and put that in.
So, can I ask a question? We have a current contract with them. We just wanted to amend that contract, correct? So, we were hoping to get this in place by April 1st, with the season starting up. So, I don't know if it's... If council would be willing to agree to move forward and then have the amended contract come in? I mean...
Well, I think you'd want the council to approve it, and they haven't even given us a contract with the change in the 15 cent transaction fee going... I mean, we haven't heard from them approving that.
I mean, in theory, this could potentially be better for them, right? Because, okay, we were only going to pay...
15 cents.
15.
15 cents.
Up to 350 a month.
Up to 350. I mean, in theory, it could go far above that.
Yeah, it will all be loaded onto the parking fees.
And so, whatever they make is what they get. And they're not going to be limited by what the city is kicking in.
Right.
So, from that... From their perspective, it's probably a winning idea.
I still think we should have a written contract for the council to approve.
We have another April council meeting.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, I just...
Okay.
As long as this is a good start. I mean, Brandon should have had a contract to you. I understand that. It's just, this is juggling. It's been juggling.
So, do we want to delay this?
Yeah, can we postpone it to the next? Make a motion to postpone for the next?
Hopefully, we'll have a contract by then, and it'll be...
Just tell them it's not going to be instated until they get a contract to us.
I'll contact him again. Do I need to make a motion, postpone that?
Yeah, then it's part of the...
Is there a second?
Okay.
Second.
You made the motion.
Sure, to the next comedian.
Okay. And there's the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Okay, new business. We have Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas 2014 marks the 142nd anniversary of Arbor Day in the United States and the 131st year of celebration by Wisconsin communities, and whereas the trees are among Hudson's most beautiful natural resources and bestow fine opportunities for aesthetic appreciation and recreation, as well as improvements for our homes, public lands, and indispensable to our ecology as providers of wildlife habitat, erosion control, air filters, and noise inhibitors, and whereas City of Hudson has been named Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation in recognition of an outstanding efforts of the city... By the city and its residents to provide legal basis and financial investment and community participation to support the ongoing program to plant, nurture, and routinely maintain and restore their canopy of trees. And whereas the demands of our environment and our environmental resources necessitate an increased awareness of ecological values, as well as individual commitment to the study and appreciation of trees and their maintenance. Now, therefore, I, Alan D. Birchall, do proclaim Saturday, April 26th, 2014, as Arbor Day in the City of Hudson, and call upon the citizens to participate in the Arbor Day celebration and continue to support and protect our trees and woodlands. So, we have that... I think there's a brochure on the desk.
And there is a link to that on the city webpage.
So, it's April 26th. It'll be down at the West Garage, West 7th Street, west of 2nd Street. So, we'd like to see a lot of people attend that, because it's a good event. We have a couple other things here, and then we'll turn it... We also have a urban forestry tree program. Whereas if someone wants to make a donation to the city of $150, a tree can be planted, and we can... We're not going to... We can make it in memory of someone, if you prefer to do that. There won't be any plaques by it. Is that correct, Tom? There is no plaques or anything? We don't maintain those. Also, on Saturday, April 13th, everyone should attend.
Sunday.
Sunday, excuse me. Sunday, April 13th, our fire department is having a pancake breakfast. So, it's good food, and it's a good support of our... All proceeds go to Fire Company Number One. We have an appointment here, and I don't think I... My computer just stopped, but I think it's for cable board.
Yep.
We have Erin Rabado. She has agreed to replace Mr. Anderson, who is off of the cable board. It goes until April 30th, 2014, and then she's agreed to serve again at our next meeting. So, if I can get a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication from city attorney. City staff?
Just the organizational meeting will be next Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. Agendas will go up tomorrow.
Okay. City council people.
Go.
Go.
I just want to say thank you to Kurt and Lori. It's been an honor having you guys as a citizen, as a city council. Appreciate all the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you, Randy.
Mary?
I, too, would like to thank Kurt and Lori. Kurt's... Our daughters are like best friends, so it's been nice having... Working together. It's always been a pleasure, and it's been an honor. And Lori's been like a mentor to me since I've gotten on council, and it's been an honor and a privilege as well to work beside you. On that note, I'd also like to read something that I wrote, because if I don't write it, everybody knows I'll mess it up, so... "I'd like to express my frustration with the last election and how some members of the community chose to make it partisan. City council is a nonpartisan body. We do not make decisions based on whatever political party we may or may not be affiliated with. The city as a whole has been divided ever since Mr. Schober began the recall process on our state Senator Sheila Harzendorf. He has continued his tactics with our local government, going as far as calling residents in my district off the recall Walker list and placing a quarter-page ad in the December 19th paper in search of someone to run against me in the past... In this past election. I will add to that by informing residents that he does not, nor never has he resided in my district. My problem with all of this is not with the challenge, but the bullying behaviors of Mr. Schober and his followers. They continue to divide the city through spiteful tactics. Now, since the council results were not as they were hoping, a new thread of recall has begun on the other members who were not recently in this past election. I am tired of the division, and I am tired of the partisan tactics. We, as a body, will not be bullied. It is time to move forward and let the elected body serve and our community heal. If our constituents are not happy with decisions we make, then contact us or choose to do as we have done and run for public office. Our term is not made up of one vote, and if you plan to run with an agenda, then I suggest you rethink that decision, as it is a duty to serve the city. It is not an avenue to push through personal agendas. We work tirelessly to serve, and we do so with pride, even though we are mostly criticized, as most public servants are. That being said, local government can be very taxing, however we serve, because we care. Let's not undermine this. And to quote Mr. Schober himself, "We deserve better." Thank you.
Okay, now it's my turn. Kurt and Lori, thank you very much for your time. It's been... I remember talking with you at the Y, probably, what, 2008?
Yeah.
About maybe you should try running for city council. And Kurt, I see your wife at the Y.[1504.62][1504.62](laughter) But I don't see you there.[1506.74][1506.74](laughter) But it's really been fun. I mean, I think we don't always agree, and that's good. And I'm glad we don't always agree, but I think we've been civil, and thank you very much for your service. It's appreciated. And I know it's hard. Lori chose to hang it up right now, and you ran, and good luck to both of you, and we really appreciate all the work that you've done on the council.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I have a few words.
Yeah, okay. Okay, okay.
This is my last chance, right?
This is it, Lori.
All right.
Better speak into the microphone.
Here comes the scientist now.
You're all in trouble. No, I just want to say it's been an honor to serve. It's been six years, and it's fun looking back and looking at all that's been accomplished. As Mary alluded to, a lot of times, and especially during elections, there's a lot of criticism launched at, you know, the particular body. It's an avenue to get in, and so, you know, people like to be critical of what's been done, but I think it's good to look back and see the good things that have been accomplished. Lots of road projects. And I know I'm going to forget some, but Carmichael, Cooley, 11th, Crestview, some downtown streets still need more work. Hopefully, Wisconsin Street will be completed in my lifetime.[1589.02][1589.02](laughter). You know, developing the Storm Sewer Fund has been important, especially as we go forward as an MS4 city, just to be better stewards of the water that's entering the St. Croix River. In Public Works, lots of new plowing equipment, which was... Came in handy this year. We have some better policies for snow plowing, and we have excellent long-range planning in place for road repairs, so... Anyone who says the city doesn't have a long-term plan, better look closer, because we do. As far as public safety goes, Marty, I told you a couple years ago that Police Department is the best building you will ever be in.[1628.34][1628.34](laughter) Okay? He's nodding his head, yes, so... Not too many police departments are on the river and have underground heated parking, so...
And an office that he has, yeah.[1638.62]
Yeah, we have computers in all our squad cars. The guys all have iPads, they're going to have video cameras, even though I voted no. We have, our canine unit is up and running. That's something I ran on six years ago, and I'm glad it's up and running. You know, the dog is trained for narc, for all kinds of narcotics detection, and I would implore our school district to make better use of it than they have. It's available, they have to be invited into the schools, so if people want to know, you know, what more could be done about the drug problem, I suggest that our school district look into taking better advantage of that. Our EMS department is, has expanded into the lower level of City Hall. They are in just a far better position, and I'm not taking any credit for it, even though I sat on EMS the last couple of years. It's been several years, you know, transition, but very well positioned financially. We're as well-trained as we've ever been. Some new ambulances, just, you know, an outstanding job by Kim with her leadership there, too. And then our fire department, you know, still a very, very strong volunteer service, lots of new equipment there, too. We have a new chief coming on board, Chief Fry's done an outstanding job. Some of you probably forget, unless you, Randy, you're the only one who's been here long enough, but back in 2010, no, you were here, too.
Ask me, say!
I'm sorry. But we transitioned to a new mayor midterm, so when Dean Knudsen was elected to the State Assembly, you know, there was, that was a difficult decision by council, but I think it's something we worked through. Alan Burchell was appointed at the time, you ran a couple months later, and I think we've been well-served by both Alan as mayor and Dean in his position at the State Assembly. Energy savings. Our city garages are heated by used motor oil. We're moving to more efficient street and signal lighting. With LED lighting, it's going to be a large capital investment, but I think it's one that's going to, you know, pay back, returns quickly. We've made improvements to our city's heating and cooling system, and some huge investments have been made in more energy-efficient equipment at our wastewater treatment facility, so they're doing an excellent job down there. Our parks continue to be outstanding, and I think one of the great things about the city. Our library has been moved to a gorgeous new building down by the river, and I think is one of the nicest libraries in the area. They pay a lower rent than could be found anywhere in this area for a building like the one that they sit in. The continuation of the Hudson Area Joint Library has been not without some bumps in the road. But I, I will just say, I think the, the county made some decisions that have made it difficult for the joint library to stick together, but they continue to do so, and I will just say this, if our library is going to survive, they need to remain a joint library. So any motion, any movement to try and split it off and, you know, put it just in the city, I think will be the demise of the library. So if that's the goal of anyone on the county board or anywhere else, I think it spells trouble. I'm not quite done. We have...
You've had, you got, you've got the floor.
We have outstanding city staff, very dedicated, very knowledgeable, very invested, and I appreciate that. We've made some changes to city policies, some things that I think have been maybe brushed aside for a long time, but that this council has had the courage to take up. One was snow plowing, getting cars off the roads during snow plowing. It's made for much more efficient plowing, it's safer for our plow drivers, it's safer for people's vehicles, and it gets our roads cleared sooner. We have a new procurement policy, which has made for just a more efficient process for all purchases. I think that, and I would say this even if John were here, the removal of the docks on 1st Street was something that had not been faced head-on, and this council took it up. It was personal, it was, you know, sometimes uncomfortable, but we took it on and I think resolved it in a, in a meaningful way. And hopefully, we're moving toward more of a merit-based system for city employees. Community development, Uline, wow, 640,000 square feet of job-creating, revenue-building business. They came here, they came to Wisconsin because of the climate, the tax climate in Minnesota. We drew them to Hudson. Danny, you were a huge part of it, Alan. What a tremendous asset to our community, and, you know, they're, everyone said, well, they're bringing all their employees with them. Yeah, they did, and guess what? They're still hiring. So you bet they're bringing jobs over here. Development of the travel center, lots of new additions to the business park, lots of new restaurants, many of which we haven't gotten to, Peter, I hope we have more time once I'm off council, but. Several new senior living facilities, I mean, several have gone in the last few years. And I think retention of the dog track for future development for the city is critical. It was without a doubt the most contentious issue, I think, that this council faced, at least while I've been on. It was an important decision for the City of Hudson. In the end, we're stewards of the city's resources first and foremost. Public education, education in general is a concern to everyone, but the role of the city is to, you know, look into the future, see what our long-term needs are. Protecting that land for future development was critical, and I'm proud of this council for doing it. So when I was elected six years ago, I had people tell me, you'll never make everyone happy, and they were right. I sometimes wonder if you could make anyone happy. But, you know, the issues we deal with, sometimes they're big, sometimes they're small, and a lot of times, they hit kind of close to home. You know, I've always held the belief that making the right decision on issues far outweighs the importance of any one of us, or future election possibilities. Policy and principle have to always come first. They trump everything else. People and personalities, including mine, will come and go, but the decisions we make will, in some cases, outlive all of ours, all, all of us. So with that, I'm looking forward to more time with my family, fewer vacations wedged between committee meetings, more time to devote to my real estate business. So I wish the council, and you, Mr. Mayor, all the best, and look forward to all the progress in the coming years. Thank you.[1781.03]